All right, welcome, everybody. It is December 19th, 2023 at 4:30. I'm calling to order the Board of Select Board meeting of the Town of Wenham. Present is myself, Dayen Bucow.
Peter Clay.
Ben Timman.
Deirdre Parrotti.
Gary Chiseman.
Awesome, we're all here. So, we're starting a little bit early, but is there anybody, anybody out there with public comment? I don't see anybody. Just us? Okay. All right, there we go. Town administrators update and town announcements. Steve?
Yep. I want to pull up that picture. All right, it's right there. Yes, I want to share the police chief, excuse me, the fire chief shared this with me the other day, so I wanted to share it with the board here and the public. I said, I don't know if you remember, the Select Board surplused the administration vehicle for the fire department about a couple of months ago, and we donated it to Ukraine. So, this is a picture of it in action that we got tagged in.
Does it still say Wenham on it?
Yeah, I believe it does, yeah.
That's amazing, right?
So, I thought that was pretty cool. Yeah, that's great.
Wow. That's great. Thank you for that, that's great.
Yeah, we just got notification, if you remember, on Saturday, Rich mentioned the Fair Share Act and the million-dollar tax and how it was, some of it was going, it was earmarked to come back to the local municipalities for roadwork infrastructure. So, we actually coincidentally just got the amounts for that. It looks like we're earmarked to get about $85,000, which is real money. And that's, you know, we get about 150 for, roughly for Chapter 90 funding, so the use restrictions will be similar with this. So, it's like a 50% increase, so that's really, really good news.
And that's strictly for roads?
Yeah.
Road maintenance?
Yep.
That's awesome.
I heard from the Deputy Chief of Staff in Bruce Tyre's office, the special legislation for the clerk got out of, has left the Senate and is now in the House. So, when the three-to-five legislation, it took, you know, several months to get through the Senate and then about a week to get through the House. So, hopefully, that will be similar and will be on course to have it on the local election in April. We finally got a response from D-CAM through the help of Sally Cairns on the, oh my God, the address slips me.
24 Cherry.
24 Cherry Street. So, they are aware that it has significant structural issues. They had to vacate the tenants in 2015, and it's been vacant since then, which we probably already know, and that they would like to demo the building and replace it with another building. However, they have no funding and have no plans for it at this time. So, we have a meeting in January to go over in more detail about what needs to be done in that building. Let's see, fire station roof, we have the final sign-off today, so they're done. Actually meant to share some drone pictures of it, just to get an idea, it looks good, quality work, so signed off on that, that's all set. And here's the other ones, you know, the police, like you mentioned, they're conducting the oral boards today and tomorrow, Joe's serving on the panel, and hopefully, we have some good recruits for the police station. That's all I have.
Wow.
Yeah. Michelle, can you pull up that? Right, so last night, we had a meeting of the Elementary School Building Committee. And just so you know who's on this committee, obviously Eric's on it, Vinnie Leone, Eric's finance person, the Hamilton Town Manager, Steve, David Polito, School Committee, Tommy Myers, Hamilton Select Board, me, the Principals of Cutler and Winthrop Schools, teachers from Cutler, members from both FinCom, three residents with relevant background experience. So, it's a pretty good group. We had a meeting yesterday, and that's, you can see where the arrow is, you are here. So, last night, we approved a design option and comparative cost estimates. We have 13 options. One is sort of the one we're forced to do by the state, which really is a non-starter. You're still out of code in so many different ways, don't ask me why. And generally, the options range anywhere from 80 to like 110, 115 million dollars. But, so, we have upcoming two community forums. There's great interest in this. We're starting to get letters from people who are very concerned that one of the options or the option that, that the building committee is leaning towards, which I don't really understand that because we're not leaning anywhere, is tearing down Winthrop and consolidating everything at Cutler. So, we're getting letters about that, which is why I went through and mentioned who's on the committee, including both the Principals of Winthrop and Cutler and teachers at Cutler. We have two community town forums, 110, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the middle school multipurpose room, and then 117, these are both Wednesdays, 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. at the high school auditorium. And I know I'm going to be there for these things, just to see how they go out. And then, we just, the big date is 12224, Building Committee Approval of PDP Submission, that's to the Massachusetts School Building Association or whatever the heck it is. And then, it takes another three months until the building committee approval of the proposed building option, and then it goes to town meeting a year from next April. So, that's where we are. I'm kind of excited about this. And I know a lot of people are actually very excited about wherever we end up, it's just something that we have to do.
So, just a quick question on the, on the slide. The building committee approval of PDP submission, January 22nd, 2024, that is your committee approving of a design?
No, I can't actually remember.
Okay, okay.
I think it is.
I see approval of design is, I don't know, I'm confused where we are, but there are a lot, there are a variety of options on the table.
There's a lot of stuff back and forth with Massachusetts School Board, MSBA.
I believe, how many is it, 14, 15?
13.
13.
We added two more yesterday.
Okay, so 13 options are on the table.
So, that's where we are.
And they'll go over all those in January at the forums?
Yeah.
Explain all that?
Yes.
Yep, so that would be a good date to go. Awesome. Ben, you have any reports?
I do not.
Okay. Deirdre, do you have any reports?
I just wanted to say thank you, and also, if people are wondering why we're meeting so early, it was in order for me to be able to attend this meeting and still make it to the middle school holiday winter concert.
Recording in progress.
So, I appreciate it, I wanted to say thank you to everyone for accommodating that early time, and it's a great concert, if you haven't seen it, kids are awesome.
That's great, thank you. Gary, anything?
And speaking of music, yesterday, the Council on Aging held its holiday review, and Kevin Rich, Mary Beth Eyre, and Jeannie Moran from the Solstice Singers entertained at the beginning with the carols and so forth. And then, Melissa Graham's string jammers, fourth and fifth graders, 25 of them on the ukuleles, entertained for a good half hour, you know, they're only three months into their new course, but they were very good, and of course, for the parents and grandparents and seniors there, it was a standing ovation.
What grade, what grade is Lauren?
Fourth and fifth graders.
Fourth and fifth, so it wasn't, recorders on the third grade.
No.
Awesome. I'd like to thank everybody for the budget meeting on Saturday. We had three and a half hours, maybe, all the departments came in and spoke about the budgets, the FinCom and the Select Board listened very carefully, I thought it was really well done. So, I thank Steve and gang for setting that up. Reeds Across America had a beautiful day and a really good turnout, it was super nice to have the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts there as well. Other than that, I don't really have announcements, I'm hoping at the end of the meeting, we can go through our schedule going forward from now, sort of towards April, because for some reason, my calendar is a little bit confused, so we'll do that at the end of the meeting. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Here we are, correspondence, none to talk about today. New business, Veterans Committee update, Dean's not here yet because we're awfully quick, so let's jump down to tree program update, because Kate is here, if that's all right.
And Win Mullery.
Win Mullery, I saw him sneak in, I wasn't know, I didn't know if he was going to be involved in that, but come on out.
Win Mullery, tree warden, I'd like to thank Kate for putting the slides together and just being a general help in everything, so I'll have to deputize her as Assistant Tree Warden at some point in time. Yeah, so, I mean, we're basically a budget of roughly $35,000, appreciate the upgrade from last year. I mean, I think a lot of that focus is really just trying to put in more trees, even though the need for removals and the calls for removals and trees of concern hasn't decreased. National Grid has come in this past year itself and done quite a bit of work to help out, and I think they're doing a few more, just prunings and things like that, so I feel like we're catching up on it. Really, just having a goal of planting 25 trees a year with this new addition, and with the help again of the DPW as they can fit it in, I know they're a little stressed out with labor, but I mean, they've been a great help, just working with Keith Carter. So, it's, it's really about that, trying to focus more on native trees and trying to be sensitive to all our delicate areas in town, as we do have a, you know, our drinking water supply. And with an eye on climate change, but other than that, we're always trying to plant away from power lines and trying to find some new ways to, you know, fit trees in, in certain areas, but working with residents as best we can. So, yep.
That's great.
Okay.
All right. Next slide.
So, I can't not talk about green infrastructure if we're talking about trees, and Win and I have talked a lot about, you know, what are our opportunities for green infrastructure? You guys know I've sent this picture to you before or talked about it. This is the Angelini Farm over here, and this is Topsfield Road, and you see it goes down a hill into the Wenham Swamp. This year, at the Wenham Swamp, I noticed that there was probably a quite large cyanobacterial bloom. That just shows that the area might be a bit stressed, so it really, there was a lot of different factors that can come, that can see it, we'll watch it, but the swamp might be getting stressed, and a lot of that has to do with pollution and climate change. And so, this area is so important to the town because this is where we pull groundwater, so there's wells over here, and so we need to keep this area clean. So, why I always keep talking about these three catch basins that they have here, the stormwater runs straight down into this area of the swamp completely unfiltered. So, all the pollution that's on the road that is coming from those houses, that's coming from the farm and the streets, is flowing right into the swamp. So, it's a small little point area that's really noticeable, but there's something we could do about it. Next slide. So, there are these tree filters, this looks exactly kind of like the catch basin that's currently there, and there's the three that connect together, so there's already the infrastructure there. These tree filters are wonderful for cleansing stormwater before it gets down into the swamp area. So, what's on the streets, we've got oil and grease, phosphorus, nitrogen, bacteria, heavy metals, lots of nasty stuff, but this simple system could actually cleanse most of that. There's percentages for each thing, like 60% of the phosphorus and a little less of the nitrogen, but there's a lot of studies that are being done at UNH, especially on what these systems are doing, and they're coming out with some great research. So, very similar to a regular catch basin, you've got this long, large concrete structure, and so this is where the water goes into and then pumped into this area where there's mulch, some engineered media, and then a stone chamber. So, these, these filtration systems cost seven, well, $7,000 is what we pay now for a catch basin. You have to add on top of the $7,000, the tree and this inside filter stuff, and so we estimate about $8,000, so about $1,000 more each system. My suggestion would be, as the time goes on, and you know, I badger you guys some more about all this stuff, is we can really work with DPW, and when a catch basin needs to be replaced, do we have the money to put one of these in instead, the extra $1,000? Again, it would really help the water supply, help with flooding, it helps with a lot of different issues, so that's all I wanted to add to Win's presentation.
Does anyone have any questions?
All I know is, two weeks ago, whoever the vendor was for National Grid came and, I mean, they really pruned back the trees. Dennis, on Arbor Street, we got a pretty, they did a really good job, and I don't know, if they hadn't have done that, I don't know what would have happened over the last couple of days with that crazy wind.
We've actually, if you go back to the two slides before of the tree removals, so you can see, we got really lucky, see, 40 trees removed by National Grid, that's money that Win did not have to pull out of our budget for that, and those were really stressed trees. So, we went out to every tree, and we saw that these trees are really stressed, so it is helping, it was a big help to us, National Grid, this year. Do they do it every five years?
They're, they probably come out more frequently on, just to review, because we are on a line that goes from Beverly all the way to Gloucester, and they're mandated to keep that open and reduce the number of power outages. So, they're looking at that all the time, so, and I feel, I mean, we did pretty well during the storm, minimal power outages, you know, Great Pond, obviously, but yeah, they're on, they're on a four- to five-year schedule, maybe.
Yeah. And a lot of that, how we did not have the tree problems that may be at Topsfield and stuff had, where lots of roads were closed, is because he's choosing the right trees to take down. You know, because the budget's only $35,000, and you guys actually upped it last year, he has to really be choosing which ones to take down and is picking the right ones, so it's been really good.
Great.
The fruit trees at Reynolds Farm, are you planning to do that every year, and so what's the goal? Are you trying to get to an orchard?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we're trying to get to an orchard for Wenham, absolutely.
Awesome. Is there a set number that makes an orchard?
I don't know if there's a set number, but the area is, I think, about a quarter of an acre where they can have it, so I think it would be how many we can fit there. The Food Project actually wants to do more than apple trees, they talked about different trees, like pom-pom trees, which I'm not really sure what those are, I think they're more of a southern fruit tree or something, but because of climate change, they think it might work here, so they might want to try to have us do different varieties of different kinds of trees, which might be fun.
Gary, did you?
And we can mention, the, those trees in the orchard are by private donation, right?
Yes.
So, people can donate this spring.
Donate for that, yeah.
Absolutely.
The tree filtration system, which I think is fantastic, so you're looking to try to do it along Angelini first, is that your, do you have ideas for other areas, too?
So, I think that they should go anywhere where there's.
Anywhere.
Yeah, so I, my ultimate goal would be, hey, if you're replacing a catch basin, we replace with.
We do this.
This other system. But, Angelini Farm, because of the swamp and.
Water supply.
The water supply, I think that would be a place where, when I'm applying for grants, I would first do.
Awesome, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
So, you had mentioned in, on the slide where you showed us the filtration system, that we have something like that?
What we have is the infrastructure on the Angelini Farm already, on, on the catch basins, there, we have the infrastructure there, so Win was actually telling me, we might be able to even look at what's there and figure out if there's a way to kind of,
add a tree?
You know, make it cheaper, but it would be something we'd have to really look into. I think it might just be, it's so old, we might have to just put the whole new casting system in.
So, how would we go about informing the DPW that we, anytime there's a catch basin issue or needs to be replaced, that we would like them to look into something like that? How would we go forward with that?
I think it would be a great conversation to have with Rich Souza, I think he, you'll hear when I talk to you about West Wenham Park, he's been really understanding of these different kind of issues and definitely willing to do whatever it is. I think it's, it would be his budget, so.
Okay.
If it's an extra $1,000 to do it, does he have it in the budget that year? I know there's different cities and towns where the, especially cities where they have a little bit more funding in DPW, where the Select Board, the city councils mandate it, so Arlington, Cambridge, they mandate that any new one would be upgraded to a tree box.
Right, but we could, we could ask him to add that to his budget to cover for however many normally.
Yeah.
Need to be replaced or something.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Anything else? Thank you, guys, thank you both for coming in. Nice to see you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to A, Veterans Committee update with Mr. Dean Peterson. Thanks for coming in, yes, we are early, yeah, yeah, yeah. Unless you want to sit for a little bit, we can take someone out of turn.
No, no.
Okay.
Might as well just keep the engine running.
And what would you like to hear from me?
Anything you want to update us on, the Veterans Committee? I did mention that Reeds Across America was very successful and very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, weather helped, too.
Yeah, this is our fifth year, and each year, there's an incremental growth to it. Probably the most telling incremental growth was greater participation by the Scouts. They rallied and they performed, and they were happy to do it this. The other is an indirect consequence of something. I would receive the death notices later, meaning much later than the death had taken place, and that was just a factor of reporting systems, and I wasn't, meaning the Vetcom, wasn't on the distribution list. So, this year, we became part of the distribution list. And why do I say that? It's because this rather magical moment took place. Monica Angersinger's husband died suddenly. She lives on Walnut in Wenham, and I got the death message pretty close to when it occurred, and this is a tribute to Kirsten Alexander and Bill Wilson, just coordinating and saying, Vetcom needs to be on the distribution list. Each spouse, surviving spouse, I write, and sometimes it's later, six months later, because that's how I get to know it. This time, it was very close to the time of death, and the spouse responded. And I said, would you be willing to participate in Reeds Across America and place a wreath on the Army podium? And she said she would, and she did. And she has reflected back to several members of the Veterans Committee how much that meant to her. Well, Bill and I were talking, and I said, it's an indirect consequence of being on the distribution list, because we make a direct contact with a spouse, and we invite them in to participate in something that brings honor to, to the deceased. So, we're going to do that going forward, and I think we're in very good shape for that to, to take place. So, that's one of the great success stories, I think, Reeds Across America. The other is an emerging success story, is that now our VSO tells us that there are a few more veterans who have applied to the VA, are beginning to go through the screening process, and some of them have already been acknowledged as beneficiaries of disability. And the reason that's a success story is that, as veterans, we tend not to go toward the VA if we feel fine, our primary care says we are fine, and we have nothing to report, and the VA says, let us make that determination. If you were in a dangerous place, if you were in combat, if you were aboard ship, if you were on a flight line, if somewhere in your career, you were in a dangerous place, we would like to know that, and we would like to address that. Now, that's a much different tack that has been taken with the VA since all of us returned from Vietnam. So, that's a big plus, and we're trying to encourage, there are 134 veterans living here in Wenham, and many of them have communicated, I'm fine, Dean, I don't need anything, life is good, and all the rest, and we say. There are a few of us that are poster childs for that same thing, but some of us found out that, yeah, we've, we've got a military-related problem that the VA can solve. So, there we are. The other thing is, we have prepared a handbook. It's a loose-leaf binder, it has 11 tabs in it, and it starts with the mission of the Vetcom and goes all the way through everything that we've been doing for these last five years with a way to do it, so that when somebody comes on to the Vetcom and is new, all we have to do is say, please read this, this tells you how to do what you have to do. So, we hope that we'll be able to vote on that in January, and then I'll bring a copy to you in, in February. And we think that this is something that is going to help us immeasurably as we go forward. And the other thing is, you can burglarize or plagiarize whatever you want out of this handbook. If there's something there that a committee thinks is, boy, we never thought of that, or that's a good idea, have at it, because we're looking at it as, this is a combined effort on all of our parts, all nine of us on the board, and it's common property, it's available to all to use. The other thing probably is with regard to the budget, we're proposing no increase in the budget, because we put in some money called soft money, but we had some ideas as how that was going to be spent, and, but we didn't know what the price tag on it was going to be. So, we didn't want to have a budget and then, oh, we have to knock on the door of the Finance Committee to see if they would help us out. So, we figured we would create a little soft. So we figured we would create a little soft money. And then, when that potential expenditure came up, we could deal with it and go forward. And that has proven to be the case this year. Because we've had a conversation with Rick Souza and the DPW regarding the monuments. And I use plural there. It's not only the Veterans Monument, but it's the Civil War Monument and every other monument that has a military, uh, tag to it. And how do we care for those? So we built some soft money into how we care for those. DPW has said, this is what we can do, but we can't do everything on your list. Then we said, well, we have to get that other stuff done. So we contracted that out. And that seems to be right now, at first blush, a very good relationship that we have with T and M Landscaping. And, uh, they, they prepared everything for Veterans Day and then discounted the price by making a rather significant reduction in it as a, as a gift to the veterans. So we're thankful for that, we're thankful for that relationship. But that we know is gonna be built into it. The other is, I don't know when the flags are gonna get tattered and torn, but there are 34 flags that fly on telephone poles. There are 12 flags that are placed in the center of town. There are six flags that are either five by six or six by eight. And then there are POW, MIA flags that get tattered. So, all of that has been incorporated into our budget. Before, I think it was November, I asked Rich Souza if he could tell me how many small flags that were on the poles were showing signs of where. And he says, well, right now, it seems, oh, eight. Okay, so we're, we're gonna be able to cover, cover that. Other flags, those flags, we, we take care of those. And the one that we're working on right now is, um, to purchase a Merchant Marine flag. Because the Merchant Marine now has been recognized by the federal government in some very dramatic ways. So it is time for us to own that and that will be another expenditure that's, uh, that's here. And I think the last item is more a discussion item for us all. We are talking about how we can enter into the school system and talk about Memorial Day, Veterans Day in a way that will be meaningful to young people. Not just to come in and, well, here's so-and-so and they were at such-and-such and all the rest. Would be more of a teaching opportunity. So we're, uh, we're just strategizing, trying to flesh out what's gonna be the best way to go and how to do it and.
I would go talk to Eric Tracy.
Well, that was the first. I, he came to Rotary, um, in September. And I talked to him briefly about that. He was sort of trying to get school started and wrestle with, with budgets. So I understand I was low on the totem pole. But that was gonna be my first contact and then to, to go from there and see where, see where we come out.
I'd reach out again.
Yeah, yeah, I think maybe it'll be a little quieter in, um, January. Even though FinCom is working towards budgets and the rest. It might be just a little quieter. You could entertain an idea that doesn't have money connected to it, just as people.
Actually, I think, Dean, I would wait until the end of January. When is that submission, the 20th, 28th of January?
24th, I thought it was.
24th.
Maybe.
Yeah, so after the 24th.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Cause there's, there's no pressure for us to, uh, to do that. We've got plenty of time before, uh, Memorial Day certainly, but Veterans Day. But to come up with some kind of a game plan that will make sense for, for the school and for our community.
That's great. Anybody else have any comments?
Thank you, Dean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dean, I had some comments. Wait a minute.
Okay.
Oh, I wanted to thank you very much for coming in. I think your, your committee is doing an outstanding job with the events that they put on. Going through, making a handbook or a binder for, you know, succession planning and looking to educate is top things in my book that we could all learn from. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Ah, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Used car dealer license renewals. We have Burnett's Garage, Fallon's Auto Service, Inc., and, I'm sorry, Burnett's Garage, Inc., and Freeman's Garage. How do we, how do we go through these? Do we discuss one at a time? I don't really remember.
Well, we have a motion, move them singly, each one at a time.
Okay, yeah, and then we can discuss each one. Okay, thank you.
So why don't we start with Burnett's?
Okay.
Who's the motion? Who's the mover?
Me.
Okay.
I move to approve the 2024 annual used car dealer license for Burnett's Garage.
Second.
Okay. Motion is there, seconded. Any conversations, discussion, or questions? No one's here from Burnett's? Nothing? Anyone? Anyone? All right, let's vote.
Ben, aye.
Peterson, yes.
Diane, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Deary, yes.
It's a unanimous vote for the Burnett's Garage license. Thank you.
All right, and then Fallon's Auto Service. I move to approve the 2024 annual used car dealer license for Fallon's Auto Service.
Second.
Motion, seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments from us, from the world? No one? Let's vote.
Ben, yes.
Peter, yes.
Diane, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Deary, yes.
It's unanimous vote, Fallon's Auto Service for 2024.
Okay, uh, any discussion on Freeman's Garage?
Well, you gotta do the motion first.
Okay. I move to approve the 2024 annual used car dealer license for Freeman's Garage.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion from the Select Board? From the public? Come right up, sir.
Good evening. Dennis Curran, 32, and I own 38 Arbor also. So we're right, right in between. Mr. Freeman, he has done a little bit better, but it still looks like a junkyard. You know, and it's kinda like just putting lipstick on a pig every year. I could tell you exactly when his meetings are coming up, when his renewals are coming up. Because two weeks in ahead of time, he starts to clean up. And then Rich goes down and takes a look, okay. Two weeks later, it looks like a mess again. How can we kinda control this? Now we've got four or five pieces of fence that are down and a lot of the stuff, he had stuff leaning on the fence. And, uh, you know, usually I'd say to a neighbor, I'll split half the fence with you. But not if you're breaking the fence. I'm not gonna do that, you know? But how do we? How do we, how do we make sure this stays under control? Is, is the question.
I just have a question. Somewhere in this packet, it talks about how many cars found and sold and when. How many cars, um, Barnetts, Harnettes, Burnett's that's sold? And then how many Freeman's? I, I just can't seem to find it. But when, when I was reading it online, I could see.
They are restricted to the amount of cars they can have, according to the building inspector. He has far.
Let's define something. Used car license, they've gotta be operable. Automobiles, correct? Some of them down there, it's, it's, I, I understand. And I've had multiple conversations with Rich. And just for people that don't know, I've lived in number 32 since 1990. My in-laws have owned the place since the 50s. And when Senior, Ed Senior owned the place, it was immaculate. And when he passed away, everything went downhill. I'm, I'm just looking to, how do we control it? I don't wanna have to call Rich every 15 minutes and say, hey, this is going on, that's going on. But he just kinda maybe sticks his nose up at everything that goes on here. And he, he doesn't care. You know, Mr. Freeman. I, I don't, you know.
So I don't know where you were going with your question. I could pull it up on the computer, but.
So here's where I was gonna go.
Okay.
So Fallon and Burnett's actually sell cars. And what I remember seeing is that Freeman sold one car and it was like two years ago.
Can, can somebody pull that up online? Make sure I'm not just making that up.
Can I also ask a question? Now, is it, is it? Can he, does, does a license and the use of the property finish when he's done with it?
I believe it does, but I, I don't wanna answer definitively.
It goes, it goes with the, with the, I think it's, goes with the person, not the land. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I believe so, but we'll have to check that for sure.
So there is a memo.
Yeah.
Memo from Chief Donapoli. I don't know if that's the one you're looking for to be written. It indicates that there was one used car sold at Freeman's this past November. Yeah, I think it's, keep going.
I mean, everybody knows this has been ongoing for so many years.
Sorry, I'm wrong.
So what, what I hear that I understand is that these licenses are renewed every year. And before they can get renewed, they have to get inspected by the building inspector, fire and police.
I believe that's, yeah.
So what you're telling us is that you, he gets inspected, everything looks fine, and then it's not fine for the rest of the year.
It's almost like you're a 15-year-old kid with the, with the bedroom.
We, um, we did put some things in place a few years ago.
Realistically, we reduced the square footage in the back for other materials from 12 to 6,000 feet, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Have we ever, you know, required that more, more frequent inspections? Can, can we do that?
I think that's, that's the one, Michelle, that mentions. The car that was sold.
I mean, Rich does go out there when he's called.
When he's called, right.
The call for a overweight vehicle sale, right? But it turned out to not be overweight.
No, it's actually, if you go back and you look at the legal agreement, it's under 10,000, 10,000 pounds. It's not the 26,000. Cause we had, I don't know if you were around Diane, the, the red school bus that was there for a year and a half, full-size school bus. That's, um, it was the attorney, the town attorney came back and said that it was under 10,000 pounds that he can only have.
So why don't we, why can't we do more frequent?
So that's what I'm asking. Can we request that there's quarterly? Or, I, I don't know if that's something we can do. So I don't know who I'm asking. I'm looking at the lawyer in the group and Steve.
No pressure.
I do have a question about the prior page, Michelle, the memo from Rich Maloney. So that indicates that, um, at least based on what I'm drawing from what he's written, that, that there are 20, that there are 25 cars in the rear of the property. Sounds like there, is that right? Are there physically about that many in the rear of the property?
Yeah, it depends, you know, depends on the time.
And then number three in his list, I'm, I'm assuming, but I don't know, that perhaps the Select Board previously imposed some kind of a condition along the lines of number three, that no more than five of the 25 can be displayed in the front. Do we know if that's something that we impose, the town imposed?
No, that was previous. The town.
Right.
That was a while ago, though.
So if that's the, I mean, one, to me, that raises the question of, if there really are 25 cars in the back of the property, but he can only put five in the front to sell and he's actually, in fact, only sold one in 2023, is it a used car facility or is it a used car facility and a junkyard?
Or storage, Frank?
Or storage. So I just don't know. I'm new enough to the, to the situation. I don't know whether some of these things have been aired before. But those are questions that at least these documents raise in my mind and it'd probably be, may be useful to, to hear from Mr. Freeman on this. Those are just questions that, that come up in my mind. I'm not sure what the answers are.
At, at one car sale a year, do you really even need a license? Anybody can do that out of their yard, right?
Right, I mean, one thing I would like to know from Mr. Freeman is if there are 25 or 20, let's say 25 less five cars in the back of the property, like, how long have they been there? Are they even saleable?
Dennis?
Well, I hate to say, you know.
No, we would have to hear from, from Mr. Freeman.
I'd tell you none of them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy anything over there.
So.
But.
So what I, what I'm just hearing is that maybe we wanna wait on this approval. We wanna ask Mr. Freeman to come in. And I think if we could look into whether we could add to these conditions, more inspections or maybe look into what, is there a junkyard license as opposed to a used car license? I mean.
There is none permitted in the town of Wenham.
There are none permitted, there's none allowable.
None allowable.
Yeah, it's in the violation.
Okay.
I think we should also take some pictures.
I have some, Diane has some.
I got some today.
Oh, you got some today?
Yeah, the fence, with, with the windstorm, the fence was knocked over and then it just kind of exposed what was going on. One of, the 38 is a three-family. And one of the apartments looks right over his backyard and it's just like, you know, that's crazy. But, you know, I'm just looking for some type of relief and, and some type of guarantee that says, I don't wish any bad luck along the guy, but if something happens to him and he can no longer act as a, as a good cause, am I gonna look at that for 30 years?
Okay, so we need to look into that.
Right.
We need to speak to Mr. Freeman. And see if we can add more conditions.
Well, for me, it'd be helpful to understand what's within our purview to request and require. You know, and where, where's the line where we're then overstepping our bounds? What can we reasonably request?
Well, I believe if someone's requesting a license through the Select Board, that we are in our purview to ask to, to speak with them. Um, I don't know whether we can add conditions, although Select Boards must have added conditions in the past to.
Yeah, I can get with Council and Robyn's pretty good at land use and she's, was probably around when the Select Board made some changes last time. So we'll reopen that. I can report back to the Board next meeting and update you.
And should we, I think we should ask Mr. Freeman to come in. I don't think that's unusual to come in.
Most, most.
Understand what's our purview before he comes.
I think if, if.
So you want him in on the 2nd or the 16th? I think we should probably add a step, which would be to send him a letter after we get a report from Steve and through Steve, Town Council's advice on both the historical backdrop and, and our, you know, our authority, et cetera. I, I tend to think that our authority is pretty broad in, in something like this since we're the giver of the license, that we can ask reasonable questions that are of concern to, to us. So I think if we, if we get a report from Steve at the next meeting, if, you know, if the timing works out, perhaps then we could agree on what questions we would ask in a letter. Cause I think, I think it would be important to provide him some notice of the information we're seeking, rather than just calling in and kinda pepper him with questions at that point. And then ask him to come in prepared to discuss the. And then ask him to come in prepared to discuss the, the points that we've put in writing. I think might be a, might be a good way to go about it.
So not renewing the license before the beginning of the year means that he cannot sell cars for, until the license is renewed, correct? So we are changing his business, holding his business back, I suppose. But I think we need to do that at this point. Do you agree?
Yes, you know, get the information from Town Council. And as I said, we need, I would say, expand a little bit. Written notification and request for written response to the questions in the letter.
Written response, not in person?
I would, I would think we need written response first, and then those might have to be reviewed by Town Council again, then call in for the.
Okay.
I think, I, I agree.
All right, so we're not taking a vote to approve the license? We have a new process, we have that down, what we want to do, reach out to Town Council, get some information. We can discuss it at the next meeting, hopefully, and then move forward from there.
There we go.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Dennis, it was kind of fun. Your son was famous there for a couple of days, yes, last week when he was named head coach of the Holy Cross football.
Yeah, yeah, it's another Diane car.
I know. My, my kids were going nuts.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know he was A.D. at.
He was at Lowell Catholic for a while. Now he's working for, um, it's a athletic facilities management group, so, you know, it's, uh, he's a character and you can't miss him at six-eight, you know.
Let him know that my, all my, my kids and their friends were just like, what?
Yeah, I wish, you know, hell out of my house, you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Discussion and potential vote on the request to close West Wyndham Park during construction. I'm guessing Kate's gonna speak to us.
Yes.
Okay.
So West Wyndham Park is now in the engineering phase, which is very exciting. So we're moving full steam ahead. And the engineers are the BSC Group, who helped us do the feasibility study. They've been wonderful. And we had a meeting with Rich Sousa, the BSC Group and myself. There are areas where we're thinking we can save money on the park if we had the regrading done during, through this area right here with the parking lot and this accessible point here by DPW. And so Rich Sousa very thankfully said, yes, that is something DPW can do. And they also offered to help with erosion control, putting in erosion control. Helped with light tree work that might be done up here. And kind of get this path going, so they'll be able to do that. And help with, there's a catch basin over here that needs a little attention. So a lot, Rich committed to a lot of great things for the park that will save probably tens of thousands of dollars. The only stipulation is that the best time to do it is in the winter. Because in the summer, they're a lot busier. And so we need it done before we hopefully break ground in the spring to the summer. So we need your permission to shut down the park in order to be able to start the work, because it will not be safe once DPW starts. And so we have, over here, there are wetlands. And so on January eighth, the West Wyndham Park Group will be going in front of the Conservation Commission with a request for determination of applicability to be able to do the work down here. That's where the jurisdiction is. Once that goes through on January eighth, and the permit goes through, it's a period of ten days after for any people to deny the permit or, um, for the neighborhood to say, hey, we, we don't agree with that permit. So there's a ten-day lag after that. So what I'm asking is that on January eighteenth, we be able to shut down the park. And it would be shut down until construction is done, which will probably be around the end of the summer. So you would be shutting down the park for a, a good time. It's not used a lot now. I've gone up there so many times, and I've at most ever seen one person walking, you know, their dog. But that would be a considerable amount of time closing, but we hope you guys will do it so we can save tens of thousands of dollars on the park construction.
Thoughts, anybody?
I'm just wondering.
Imagine somebody would complain, given what, what the transformation of that area.
Right.
How are you gonna manage signage so people understand what's going on?
Yeah, we're gonna put cones and the tape so people can't actually even get in the parking lot. And then we'll have signage all throughout the park. You know, that there is a construction zone happening.
And a new park coming.
And a new park coming. They actually, the Open Space and Rec Committee is looking into a sign. It would probably have to go through the planning board because of certain sizes, as Peter knows, have to be approved. But it'd be nice to have a coming soon sign up there as well.
So I do see cars up there, because I drive there all the time. Every now and then, they don't really use the park, they're using the, the walking, the, the woods over there. So they can find it, I'm sure they can find a different place to park, they can go to the other side.
I was just gonna say, they could go to the other side.
Autobahn area.
It's actually not a bad idea that maybe with our signage, we could suggest that.
Yeah.
That, that's an alternative place to go. That's actually a great idea.
Yeah. So, do I hear a motion to?
I move to approve the closing of West Wyndham Park during construction, starting.
January eighteenth.
January eighteenth and lasting until later in the summer. Second?
Motion and seconded, any other comments? Let's vote.
Number two, Ben, yes.
Peter, yes.
Diane, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
It's unanimous vote to close West Wyndham Park for some amazing construction. And thank you to Rich for, for stepping up. That's, um, that's all assuming that there's not gonna be a lot of snow plowing and stuff like that, but.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a really nice.
Hugely generous of him and his staff.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thanks for that. Pingree Field discussion and potential vote on allowable hours for pickleball play effective January first, twenty-twenty-four. And I think we have Mr. Recreation himself. Sean Timmons here to talk to us about that.
Hi, everyone. Sean Timmons, Hamilton Wyndham Recreation Director. So I really don't have, you know, a presentation or really even a request. I guess it's more just to provide some context and some information, you know, about the uses that have been happening down there with pickleball. And, you know, the activities that have been, that have gone on since, I guess, you know, really started kicking up this past spring. And some of the difficulties that we may find, you know, from both a program and a standpoint, and just for folks that may want to play pickleball down at Pingree Park. You know, if the, if the current situation at the, the six o'clock time kind of holds. So I know that the, the select board, you know, this past fall, early September, put a time limit for pickleball play at the courts at Pingree until six P.M., which at the time didn't really have an, an adverse impact, you know, to players or from our programming standpoint. At the time, in the fall, you know, our last lesson ended at six P.M. down there. And just with timing in the fall and daylight savings, you know, it was impossible to really even play past six o'clock. So of course, those things will change when we get to the spring into the summer. And there are some other sort of, you know, variables that also happen, you know, during those times. So, you know, for example, this spring, hopefully will be the last spring, but the high school tennis team uses both Patton Park Courts, tennis courts, as well as the WVIS courts from three P.M. to six P.M. each day. So there you already have, you know, we're sort of minimizing our, our after-school hours at some of our major, you know, major tennis or pickleball locations within town. And as well as the summer, and really, this is kind of what jump-started the, the, the move to play more pickleball at Pingree Park, was the fact that our camp and then the WVIS and the Wyndham Museum Camp also uses those courts, you know, from nine to two or, you know, whatever those, those times may be. So, you know, from a programming standpoint, you know, in the spring and the summer, you know, during kind of after-school hours or in the morning hours, you know, there are, you know, shortened windows or tightened windows for play, which really only allows, you know, for play, you know, during those, you know, non-kind of scheduled hours for whether it be, you know, lessons that we offer or whether it just be open play. You know, I'd say the majority of the play at Pingree Park was probably lessons, lessons scheduled through our department. I think I provided some information on the amount of, you know, lessons that we offered, the amount of folks that, that enjoyed it. And really, you know, just in general, and I'll kind of speak in generalities. You know, we really see sort of two, I guess, sort of types of play, right? Obviously, there's the lessons and there's the open play where folks can just come in and drop in and play wherever they, you know, wherever they would like. But we also see sort of the demographics shifting a little bit. So, you know, we offer a lot of lessons during the morning, nine to noon-ish. And, you know, those are usually, you know, tend to trend a little bit older. You know, folks that may be retired, that want to, you know, that want to take lessons. But we were, really saw a big jump in our lessons and our, um, our, our numbers of registrations and sort of those after-school into early evening hours, where we had a lot of folks. I actually just went over the numbers, it was unbelievable. During our morning sessions, our average age was somewhere between sixty, sixty-two and sixty-five. And then when we jumped to our lessons that we offered, say, between five and eight P.M., the average age dropped almost by twenty-five years. So you are seeing an influx of younger, younger, you know, residents or just younger, you know, people starting to play the game, where we really do need to utilize, utilize those kind of after-school, after-work hours where there may be availability. We certainly want to toe the line or really kind of, I guess, walk the line of being, you know, too lesson-driven and not offering enough open time for folks to play. So it's important for us to kind of realize, and from our, you know, from my standpoint, really, we only operate, our department really only operates one or oversees one facility that actually folks can play tennis at, which would be the, the Patton Park Court. So we do want to be mindful that folks do still want to play tennis, and we need to leave those opportunities available for them. So, you know, that's just kind of, like I said, context. I'm not presenting or requesting or anything. I just do feel as though there, you know, the, the effect of not allowing play past six P.M. will, you know, be greatly seen or will have a greater impact, you know, the spring and the summer than it would when it was first enacted in the fall.
Just to remind the board that that was, just for background, that that expires on December thirty-first of twenty-three.
Correct.
So there's no restriction as of January first, so.
Correct.
Right, so that, you know, also, you know, technical requests, but also for clarification, if the board wants to continue that restriction until six o'clock, if it wants to extend it, let it expire completely.
So Sean, how many pickleball courts are there at Pingree?
So there's, there's none, there's no official courts. We make, you know, temp courts. So right now, we have four temp courts that are in the, the, the initial, if you're familiar with Pingree Park, it's sort of two tennis courts, a fence in the middle, and two tennis courts. So we take, we've had, you know, three or four courts, depending upon, you know, the day or how many, you know, folks we have lined up and registered for a class in that first initial, you know, square, those first initial two tennis courts. So as you, closest to the parking lot, as you come into the parking lot, correct?
So are they tennis or pickleball or both?
So we don't do any tennis down there, so the courts are in such disrepair, so it's all pickleball. Because that's really the only, you know, we wouldn't, the courts are in such disrepair that you can't play full tennis, but you can kind of space out some, some smaller pickleball courts in the better areas of the court, yeah. We do do tennis lessons, we do those all at Patton.
So West Wyndham's got eight pickleball courts.
Eight?
Eight.
Sean, what would be your recommendation as far as starting and ending?
So I think, you know, it, it's tough, you know, I think timing is always difficult. It's, you know, for instance, so, you know, let's just say we have it at six. And then let's say our last lesson ends at six. You know, it's still light out, maybe the participants' children are playing at, you know, playing a Little League game, and they say, hey, do you want to just stick around for another half an hour after our lesson to play? You know, so that makes it a little bit of a difficult situation. And then specifically, you know, with the time limits, you know, let's face it, I mean, between five and seven-thirty, that's when the park is at its absolute busiest during the week, during the week, in the weekend. So again, I think from a, there's really two different sort of love plays. And I think Pingree Park trends more to lessons. Diane probably knows, but no, but, you know, Pingree Park's not on the playtime app. Or it's not somewhere where, you know, folks are trying to, to play, you know, I guess, non-scheduled or non-lesson play. So, you know, from a control standpoint, you know, we can also, you know, say, hey, Sean, or let's not have any lessons extend beyond seven o'clock. Fine, like, you know, those types of things are doable. You know, when we do run our lessons, though, I would say, you know, we have better success with our instructors and with, just in general, by saying, okay, well, we're gonna have a lesson from four to five, five to six, six to seven. Our instructors are there, our equipment is there, and we're shuffling in different types of play. You know, our children's pickleball has become really popular. So, you know, we could do a kids' pickleball from four to five, from five to six, we do an intro. And then six to seven, we do advanced beginner. So, you know, there's all different types of levels, all different types of, of play. But having our instructors on-site for an extended period of time is better for them, quite frankly, and also doesn't make our schedule so scattered.
And are the nets there all the time, or do you bring that back and forth?
So the nets, they come and go depending upon, you know, what we need or, you know, if it's a Monday and we know we have play Tuesday morning, then we'll keep the nets up. You know, we don't, and at Patton, we do have nets that are stored that anyone at any point can go. We have pickleballs too and paddles, that at any point, anybody can go get them and play on the courts. We don't do that necessarily at Pingree. And we probably wouldn't do that even if there weren't any lessons there, just because of, you know, I think there's an easier way to control play at Pingree through lessons as opposed to open play.
Does any, Deirdre, do you have something?
So, well, one question. In the fall, when we talked about this, we were gonna ask Open Space and Recreation to sort of look at this and start thinking about park usage, did, what happened with that?
Yeah, they were able to meet, although just recently, there's been some difficulty getting a quorum. And they would like more direction from the select board as to what specifically we want them to look at. And also, you know, if you're, you know, if, if the intent is to have a feasibility done, studied, done similar to West Wyndham, then, you know, where will the funds come from? And if it's an in-house thing, then, you know.
So, because from what I understand, the program's booming, right? Pickleball, I've talked to one of the instructors, it's booming and people really want to be doing this and playing. And my impression from her was that you could, you could fill lessons like all day, all day long, every day. So that's amazing, and we don't want to squelch the program, right? And that people are getting a lot of benefit out of it. But we've heard from the neighbors, the sound is a concern. The tennis courts are in disrepair anyway, so I think it's an open question as to what happens with those courts. Should they be, you know, resurfaced? Should it be pickleball, tennis, and so forth and so on? I think there are a lot of larger questions. But the noise question is the issue that was brought to us in the fall. Is there, are there any gains in terms of dampening the sound by different paddles, a different ball? Like, I don't know what the options are.
I mean, Diane would probably know more about that than myself, but I, I mean, my guess would probably be no. I mean, I, I'm sure there's probably, you know, they're probably working on it, but not to my knowledge, you know. Yeah, and I do think, you know, you start, you know, you start really getting into kind of murky waters there. You know, are we inspecting paddles to make sure the paddles are, you know, are this or? So it does get kind of difficult when, when you start doing that. But I, you know, if, I'm guessing that the pickleball, the United States pickleball is probably trying to find, probably trying to find some sort of, yeah, for that. And then just, you know, on your, on your other point, which I think is a really great one. one, um, you know, there's a lot of projects that are going on, Recreation, I mean, obviously the West Wenham, uh, but also, um, and the high school project is going in front of the Hamilton Planning Board as well. But the Hamilton, uh, you know, the athletic facilities at the high school will have tennis courts, those also be lined for pickleball. There's also going to be public use through our department as well as just the public in general. So I think you're seeing, you know, there's a lot of moving parts going around right now, and I think when everything sort of fits into place, you know, we'll be able to really define a, a good use for, uh, for that Pingree, for Pingree Park. Obviously it's a, a well, you know, a well-used public park, but what is that right fit, um, you know, that goes in there? And, you know, I can tell you just from, you know, we had a lot of trouble this fall, it's obviously in a, in a very wooded area back there, um, the pine needles fall, it gets sappy, um, so, you know, it was really difficult to even just play a less sport court down there in the fall. So there's all sorts of things to, to think about, you know, as you move forward.
So the current agreement was no later than six?
Yes.
So I propose we go no later than seven, and then when all these other courts come online, we can back them off again.
Or look at it again.
Yeah.
So I, I have, um, an idea. So my first idea was, um, because I want everyone to play, so I would love to have it, but it, it is an annoying loud noise for anybody who lives there. So with that respect, my first thought was maybe to spread out the lessons. Um, but again, that's not really very cost-effective for the instructors or for the people and kids and whatnot. So if we limited the days, you know, and don't have any lessons Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday, something, I don't know, so that certain, the neighbors wouldn't have to hear it that day as opposed to another day and just.
Yeah, so.
Try to work in some time without the pickleball noise, because as soon as it's open, someone will be there and someone will be there longer than you tell them to be there and it, you know.
Right.
Just the way it is.
Yeah, so I know, and, and just being that, I know in the summer, we're already looking at, um, you know, we typically do tennis five days a week at our camp, we're, you know, but we go on field trips, we have special entertainment, so even we're looking to pull that back to maybe three days a week where we can do lessons on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, but yeah, like, those are things that we can control. What we can't control is someone pulling up in a truck with, who has their own net and going on the court and playing. Like, those are things that we, you know, for better or for worse, really can't control. But the amount of days, the times that we run them, things like that, we can control. Um, but I think, you know, in saying that, you know, I do feel as though, you know, especially in the spring and the summer, that six P M., um, you know, stop time is just too, is just too early, correct?
I'd agree with that. Um, so I have no problem extending it, but maybe to try to think of something to accommodate the, those that live near it.
So, I mean, it might make sense if, um, you know, we can, we don't come up with our spring schedule, um, for, you know, until basically February vacation, so, um, you know, I'd be happy to, to work on sort of a draft schedule and then maybe come back and say, hey, this is, you know, where we're at with these different things for the spring and the summer, um, just to give you guys a better idea. And again, you know, that, no promises that no one's going to play pickleball outside those times. And that, that's, I guess, the tricky part about that is, you know, this is what we can absolutely one-hundred percent control, um, but once a player signs up for a lesson, once that lesson ends, well, they're not part of our lessons anymore, so they can just stay there and play if they want, they turn into a citizen. So those are the only tricky things, um, you know, to, to think about when that comes.
If there weren't lessons, you could lock the courts, right? No?
Yeah, he's, well, yeah, yeah.
Just ask.
Yeah. I mean, you could, I mean, we could do whatever we want, I guess, but yeah, I would, you know, my recommendation would probably not to be to lock the courts, yeah.
Okay. All right. Gary?
When does the spring schedule start?
Um, so typically, um, April of school vacation was typically when folks can start getting out, so right around there. Um, but we'll obviously have the, um, you know, we'd obviously have a planner, a preliminary schedule, you know, prior to that about the days and times. Um, and to be perfectly honest with you, it's probably not going to look much dissimilar to what, you know, you, what we're all provided. Um, you know, we, we had no plays on the weekend, I think we ended on Friday rather early, I think two nights a week we went to eight, but if that needs to be seven, then we can find a way around that. So, you know, again, you know, I, I think when you say, well, you had, you know, thirty-six lessons, um, true, we did, I mean, they were all full with, with folks, but, um, you know, I think there, there are reasons, you know, reasons for that, um, you know, and Patton just is more open to open play, so, um, you know, I don't think it's going to be super dissimilar to probably what you have in front of you, um, as far as play.
So I would just ask that maybe, you know, you, you don't do every day, or you do morning Monday, Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning, you know, something, because you could, you could fill a lesson anytime, any day. That's, um, but it's really, you know, I don't know, just something to think about, I guess. Gary, I'm sorry.
Well, let's, uh, just keep the current restriction in place until, uh, first April and request a, uh, a scheduling briefing at the March Select Board meeting and make the decision then as to.
For that, right?
Or when, when you can do that.
Because you usually get the summer's spring schedule out, February break, so we'd have to meet you early February.
Yeah, I mean, I can get, I, I mean, I, I mean, this stuff takes me two seconds, I could have a schedule for you by next week, for, you know, I really, I mean, it's, like I said, I mean, the classes are the classes, so I mean, we'd have to obviously work with our instructors, um, but, but yeah, I mean, we can, you know, we can sort of work on something, but, um, you know, I guess, you know, I, I guess I would probably want to have some sort of idea of what, you know, I don't want to come with a schedule and then have it say, well, you can't, you know, so like some sort of parameters or, um, you know, for lessons, but, you know, I keep on, you know, I hate to keep on harping on it, but, you know, it's, it's tricky because even if we don't have lessons, it doesn't mean that people can't play. So I think that's.
Yep.
You know, that's, that's what makes, you know, public athletic facilities tricky, is you can schedule within them, but anybody can show up at any time and, and play.
But, but the part that we can control, we can control.
We can control, yeah.
And if we, and if we work in some quiet time, then that might be a nice, a nice compromise.
Yeah, certainly need certain days of the week quiet, and then, um, knowing that the previous schedule was kind of staggered, if we can come back and what's optimal for the, uh, instructors and just say, you know, make a decision that, you know, Sundays, you know, three days a week is, is off and they, they close at six and others there at seven.
So just taking all of the comments on board, would it make sense if we were to potentially vote tonight to extend the current limitations through March thirty-first, say, or April first? And, and then to also say that as of April first, we, um, would allow up to a seven P M. finish time, no more than three days per week?
I don't think we have to say that now.
Just, okay, um, that's.
Why not though?
My, why? Well, I'd just say extend the current, the previous ones until like March first, let him work a little bit, you can kick it around in terms of.
To vote on that later?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, which I think was Gary's suggestion.
We don't have to make that decision now.
And I'm fine with that, but it sounds like Sean is looking for some parameters to, to come up with your proposed schedule. Um, I mean, we could kind of give, give Sean the, the sense of what we might be comfortable with.
What we're thinking about, yeah.
Without voting, so that he can go back and have an understanding that three days a week, if that's what we're comfortable with.
Yeah, I mean, just looking, I mean, when we were really, you know, last summer, I guess, when maybe we were really, you know, we had our, you know, our highest quote-unquote usage, I mean, we did, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays and a Friday morning. Uh, you know, I mean, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you know, we had lessons ten hours out of a, I don't know how many hours in a week. I don't, you know, I wouldn't really say that's overkill, you know, I, I, yeah, I get it, I, I completely understand, but I think when you look at it big picture, you know, when we're talking about, you know, ten lessons in a twelve-hour, seven, you know, you know, ten hours out of a eighty-hour, ninety-hour week, um, that are all full. And I guess that's the other thing too, like, where, you know, people, people want to take the classes. Um, you know, it'd be one thing if we were out there with just two people, you know, when we had lessons and we were just constantly out there with two people. So, you know, I think there's, there's a lot to, to think about and consider, um, but, you know, I think in the big picture, grand scheme of things, um, you know, um, it's probably not as much as maybe it seems type of deal.
So have we given them direction to, as to what we think?
Gary, Gary wants to say something?
No, I was just saying, you know, I think the direction is, you know, three nights a week, lessons, and come back to us for a final decision. Meanwhile, we need to take a vote to extend the current six o'clock restriction, so there's no questions on the enforcement. And then, uh, the other big question is, we need to go back to the Open Space and Rec and make the definitive decision that says, you know, what we really need from them is their recommendation on how to use those four courts in the long term to include funding sources and any changes, because we've had the request in for the skate park, you know, we got pickleball, there's tennis enthusiasts in, but we got noise conditions that might be abated by some structures as well. So I think that's the question to the Open Space Rec is, you know, what's the long-term plan for that section of Pingree Park? And short-term is, uh, you know.
Right now, okay, got it. So let's do the motion to extend the six o'clock until March thirty-first.
I move to approve to extend the pickleball playing hours that we used in twenty-twenty-three through to March first, twenty-twenty-four.
Thirty-first, I think?
Yeah, thirty-first.
March thirty-first?
March thirty-first.
Second.
Any further discussion on that piece? Let's vote.
Ben, yes.
Peter, yes.
Diane, yes.
Derek, yes.
Gary, yes.
Unanimous vote for that.
Thank you.
And then we'll, um, do you feel comfortable with what we were kind of talking about and we can talk again? I know you have different reservations, I mean, there's, there are so many pieces.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it, it, the spring will look different than the summer, the summer will be different than the fall, we have, you know, camps, we have, uh, the tennis team is playing, so there's just a lot of things to, to work around, to, to try to figure out. Um, you know, and like I said, I mean, I don't, and remember, you know, as much as this only represents the classes that we had at Pingree, not the other half that we had at Patton, so there's also the fact that we have to work around, you know, things that happen at Patton in open play. So, um, you know, we can probably lighten up on the lessons at Pingree, um, but there's the side effect that that would then take away from open play at the other place, so.
We just said that, that the Pingree lessons have been fewer than three days, so I think you've gotten guidance from us that we're comfortable with three days. So, um, that seems like we're on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like you have to lighten it, it, it sounds like the end time is sort of the thing in question and we're leaning towards seven o'clock as a concession to the neighbors.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, and just, you know, obviously there's, it's, you know, it's a morning and a night, you know, activity, so, which kind of serves two demographics. So, yeah, no, I'll work on it and, you know, be back, be back soon.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Sean, thanks.
Thank you. So before we go to the next item, Open Space, I think it's, it's, we could ask, um, to reach out to Open Space and tell them that we want them to, can you repeat what you said? Because I think that made it clear and I'll just make sure everyone agrees.
I think the question to Open Space is, what's their recommended plan for the four current dilapidated courts at Pingree Park?
Well, I mean, that was essentially, the ma, I can share the memo tomorrow that I sent to them, but essentially that's what I said and I outlined now that, you know, we've been approached with the skate park, the Pingree pickleball fields, you know, the restriction in play and we're looking for, okay, it's not here, since you could add probably more color to what they said because it wasn't there, but, and so they would, seemed like their response was, you know, how, do you want us to do it or do you want us to hire somebody to do it?
Well, I don't think we, you know.
So I think, I think we would like them to think about it, talk about it, discuss it however they want to. If they feel the best way to go is a feasibility study, then they come back to us and we, we look at that. We don't really have the money for that at this point, but they're, they're on that committee, so.
I mean, I would think.
I'm looking for, for them to, we're, I think we're looking for them to kind of make some, some thoughts and, and bring us back some ideas.
Without spending money.
Right now, but if, if they come back and say, you know what, we just, for whatever reason, we need a professional company to do this, well, then with something else we got to talk about. But I would hope that they'd be able to come up with something. Right?
Yeah, I think the, the, the question, the larger question is the usage of the whole park and whether there's additional optimizations, right? So to me, that's like the big question, which may require something larger in terms of a feasibility study. But this question, just on the courts, is sort of, I think, a manageable bite, basically, um, for the committee to look into in balancing skate park, tennis, pickleball.
What else? We don't even know what other ideas might come up, yep.
I mean, I think the sound baffling is, is a big question as to whether that's at all feasible and how effective it is, and then about what to do with those courts.
Yeah, so I don't, I, we're not asking them to look at the whole Pingree park.
Not yet, right.
We're just asking them to look at it.
But even just looking at that one piece, let's just say hypothetically, they say, you know, we want to keep the courts and we want to turn them into pickleball courts and we want to keep them tennis courts, but we want to repave them, do them over. So then you spend some money on the tennis courts, you know, and they've kind of fixed that one spot, but then, you know, then what do we do with the rest of the park? And what if a study is done a year later that says, well, you know, the, if you want to keep the field, the, the courts, we probably should have moved them over here because then you can do this, I'm just saying.
The rest of the park, though, is pretty much consumed right now with the three main trails, the new garden and the, uh, practice batting cage.
Can't imagine that there's really anything else right now that we would want to do.
Horse shoes.
That, that park, botchy, perhaps. Maybe that's a good.
Heard some ideas.
Yeah. But I think it's just that area, that area that is tree-covered, difficult to keep up, to redo that as courts at all is super, super expensive because we looked into that many times. So what are the options? What does Open Space think they want to do and come up with some sort of idea?
Good.
Right? Okay. Oh, schedule. So you did have September, January second on that originally?
Originally it was the sixteenth. They got shuffled around a month ago.
All right, because I was like, did I miss it? I don't know. We're doing scheduling. So do we have another meeting before the end of the year? We don't. Happy New Year, everybody. When are we meeting? Just the Select Board, regular meetings. January second is that?
Well, that's, that's what I put this up, so this would be a regularly scheduled meetings. Um, you even indicated you wanted to discuss the meeting dates leading up to town meeting.
Yes.
So, you know, I put, they weren't all up here, we were just kind of earmarking important dates, not that every Select Board meeting isn't important, but just dates where they opened and closed the warrant, voted on fi, final budget recommendations, things like that. So I just added the meetings that, uh, would fall in between those events and so the board can view them and make changes, align scheduling, things like that.
So we start on January second, January sixteenth. So then there's three weeks between January sixteenth and February sixth.
So it gets down to, do we go with a first and third Tuesday schedule or a every other week schedule?
So, and I brought it up only because I had my schedule written based on something I must have made up in my head. So, um, we just, I just need to come to some decisions so we can write it down so people can plan.
I think you people who work drive this discussion.
That's the three of us, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so if you go with January second, January sixteenth, the next question before we go any further than that is, do you want three weeks or do you want every other week? And thoughts on Gary?
I'm thinking the first and third because what you don't see up there, we still got another, uh, there's going to be another five quintuplets.
Thoughts on Gary?
I'm thinking the first and third because what you don't see up there, we still got another, there's going to be another five quintuple meeting in there.
Yep.
And then you're going to have, backing up from April 6th, you're going to have at the end of March, the joint, the warrant hearing as well. So you're, you're already got three in January and three in March on the, the full schedule.
And then, I mean, the nature of the beast is they'll likely be one, maybe two meetings that are called out of order to meet on some, you know, business issues to be taken care of.
I just want, I just need the dates. January 6th, January 2nd, January 16th. I think the quintuple is the 30th, but February 6th. Is there twice? February 20th. March 5th. Can't work on March 5th because that is the state primary.
Okay.
So you can either do the 27th in February or the 12th.
Let's do the 27th.
As long as it's birthday cake.
Is that your birthday?
Mm-hmm.
So did we decide with FinCom whether it's going to be one week or two weeks prior to town meeting for the warrant hearing?
We have not decided that yet.
Does that make it what, the 31st or the 24th of March for the warrant hearing?
The warrant hearing would be.
Yeah, I think the big, we couldn't do it Monday because it's, it's holiday.
No, we couldn't do Monday, April 1st because I have town meeting in Manchester. It actually is not going to be town meeting in Manchester, so why don't we not make any changes?
Should we do it Tuesday just to keep it? Because honestly, more time for it to prepare for the warrant hearing, the better. So if we move it off, already condensed, you know, run up to town meeting, which is, you know, everything is happening day by day, to have that, you know, extra week if, instead of going by the Monday before.
Yeah, do it the Tuesday before.
Or do a whole week, or do it the Tuesday, just push it out to the Tuesday.
So that would be April 2nd. The Tuesday before, I think that's a good day.
Well, sure.
Late night for employees anyhow, give them a break.
Oh, I'm sorry, FinCom is here.
My apologies, because we talked about not losing a week, but shifting it to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So shifting it from the Monday to the Tuesday before. Okay.
All right, so just for, we're going to move February 20th to the 27th.
Oh, we're not going to do the 20th? Okay.
And we're going to add April 7th for the warrant hearing. No.
April 2nd.
April 2nd. April Fools.
So if you're, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, will you send this around once it's updated?
Yeah, let's update, let's look at it one more time with that. Not everybody came as crazy as me with their calendar, but, um, because that's two in February scheduled, there's only one in March. So I think you're probably going to want to add another date in March. But, well, you'll send it out and we can look at that.
Yeah, you can send it out.
Yeah, and then everyone can look at it and we can finalize that.
It's just a file.
What's that?
What type of file my computer doesn't like.
Excel? I don't know. I think you can open these. We'll put, we can put it, we'll put it in a different format for you to.
That'd be great, or I'll just come over and get a hard copy.
We'll do, yeah. We'll get it to you in a way you can see it.
General discussion on the budget presentations from Saturday, December 16th, if I may say, that was so smooth.
You know, I just wanted to, you know, where it's fresh in your mind, similarly to last year, we took notes as to what to improve, so while it's fresh in your mind, if there's any critical feedback, be open to that. Um, you know, otherwise we can move to the next item.
And I just want to reiterate that that format were accomplishments and then objectives, more or less. That's, that's great.
You mean that, that page that every department had, you know, 2023 highlights or something?
Yeah, exactly.
And did you guys do that on your own or was that through Open Gov or any, or just something like that on your own?
No, we did that on our own.
On your own, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was a, you know, the department heads were very receptive.
Is that the first year? First year that you've done that?
Yeah, it's the first year. So it was all, you know, we all, everybody, I like to call it the low hanging fruit, tried to just use the data that was readily available to us.
That's great.
And then kind of take it from there to see what, maybe we should be tracking going forward or that we're not, so.
I thought it was a great balance of, you know, the numbers with the narrative of accomplishments and next steps, the qualitative with the quantitative.
Yeah, and that was definitely the, we tried for that.
Because all numbers sometimes just gets fuzzy for me, not for people like Steve and Jeff, but so it was nice to have that broken up.
Yes.
I was thinking the same points there, but also maybe we need to just expand a little bit to get the, the committee.
Committees that spend money.
That spend money involved as well. Just, you know, because there are some, they're generally small budget items, but it does continue on the other hand of, you know, showing what the other committees are doing. And, you know, an Open Space and Rec Committee, you know, West Wrenham Park was not insignificant, so stuff like that we ought to know about as well as, you know, veterans and cemetery commission, and those ought to have an opportunity at least to come in and present some new ideas.
Yeah.
Fair point.
Also on the budget, are we going to look at revisions once a month or as we progress to the final printing or what's the plan?
Um, we, I guess we can do it any way you like. I was thinking, I guess I didn't put a lot of thought into it, but I was thinking basically we would, we would present, so we have the assumptions that we laid out for you at the, you know, at the meeting on Saturday. They're basically the same result, assumptions that Select Board saw at, you know, I think three weeks prior to that. So waiting for those to come in, I really think that those are, other than, so we have the deputy chief's contract is up, we have the fire chief's contract is up, so those are two variables that could change in addition to what I presented on Saturday. But, you know, other than that, I don't see the budget changing. And, but yeah, we can, I'll definitely, all right, I have to, we'll have to provide you with an update at the end of January because then I believe is at the middle, the first meeting in February.
I think you said that, that you had it for support the budget or vote on the budget?
Yeah, so whatever, because I want to present it to you at the meeting before, so there can be questions, digest it, and then, you know, it'll come back at the following meeting. So that's really only a month away. And I believe, Jeff, I'm not sure how you guys are, Liam, have you talked about your scheduling in January or that'll be tomorrow?
We're meeting tomorrow night to do our own initial thoughts on the presentations from Saturday and also with your budgets. If I can get a copy of what you're talking about here and see how it works into ours, that'll be helpful. But I did lay out preliminary budget for FinCom a couple of months ago that included a few reviews of budget and also space to, if need be, have additional discussions with department or committee chairs.
Yeah, that's what we did last year. FinCom took it and met with departments individually pretty much over the month of January. And then similarly to last year, we closed the warrant and made final recommendations in the middle of February. So, you know, probably something like that.
Sort of built it into our calendar. If we don't need it, we can crop meetings, but just wanted to lay that for my group so they have an idea of what dates they should have.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Deirdre, do you have something to add?
Well, a question, what point are we looking at the capital budget?
Um, likely second meeting of January, you'll get your first glimpse.
Because we would, this, last year I was on FinCom, but it still comes to Select Board first and then to FinCom, yes? Typically or both at the same time or what?
Yeah, I mean, well, this year is, I'm really not sure what typical is, but.
Me neither.
It sounds like it should actually start with the FinCom.
But I think.
It's the Select Board.
Select Board presentation.
Yeah, so I mean, I think this year the plan was to separate them, so to get the budget, you know, wrapped up, focus on that, over to FinCom for their review. And then first week of January, we have some meetings with department heads. We've already met, we've come up with a rough draft of our, our needs, although, you know, a new need that came onto our radar was HVAC in the, on the rec, in the rec building. So that's going to have to be added to it. And, you know, so we're going to go through that and finalize it, make a request, make a recommendation, and then present it to the Select Board, likely the second meeting in January.
And last year on FinCom, we did have a discussion, sort of an after-action review after the budget process, so I appreciate that you incorporated a lot of what we talked about. I thought it went very smoothly this year, so thank you.
You.
The budget, you mean the Saturday?
Yeah, well, the whole process, but yeah, and adding accomplishments and things like that.
Awesome. Okay. Anything else on December 16th? What time is the concert?
Seven.
Oh, we're doing good.
We're good.
Okay. Discussion on rollout of Climate Action Committee. I asked to bring this back up. I think the charge, mission statement, whatever, is, is done. We feel, we've voted on that, it feels really good. And I know that people are anxious to get on this. I'd like to kind of throw it out there for people to submit their letters of interest or any way they want to do that, not close it until whenever we need to, January or something. But I think that some people that might be interested in this have been waiting for this, and I think we should throw it out there. That would be my thoughts.
Throw, throw what out there?
Throw the opportunity for taking.
Participate.
It hasn't been announced yet.
Joining the, potentially joining the.
The committee.
Task force.
Yeah.
Not, not further input on the, on the mission statement or the charge.
No, no, that's all done.
Yeah.
That's all done, we just haven't.
Have we seen the final copy of the, all done? Is it, it's printed?
We, we approved it last time with the changes we talked about, and then I sent them.
But where, where's the final document?
You haven't seen it?
We'll recirculate it. Well, we'll circulate it, not recirculate.
I sent it to Steve and Diane, I think.
Yeah, so I thought, yeah, sorry, I missed that. So do you want to wait till you see it before you put it on the website?
No, I think, you know, we can certainly start the advertising out there, make, make the availability out there. I'm not sure you, some very interested parties, but as you said, I think not much is going to get done the next two Christmas weeks, so you got to put it in January.
Right, no, yeah, and I would definitely keep it, but I think if we could right now take a vote and just roll it out, put it on the website, advertise it, talk it up, slowly people will come in and then, you know, second me, we can, second meeting in January or whatever, just check in and see how it's doing and.
I mean, I think it's fine. My only concern is what Gary said is I think people aren't paying attention the next couple of weeks, and so I just don't.
Look at all the people here.
So what's the, perhaps, what's the last Thursday in January?
Last Thursday?
Yeah, has been, has been a close out on submissions.
Thursday? Why, why Thursday? The 25th.
Because we don't work on Fridays, right?
Right.
25th?
The 25th. I mean, but I, I don't think I'd put a close date on it quite yet.
Until we see.
I would love to put it out there.
All right.
I could, we could bring it up again at the second meeting in January and talk it up again and then see what more happens. But I would just like to put it on the website, let people know we have it, we're anxious.
I would maybe, I mean, I'm just rethink the close date only because we, we got some comments when we put a close date on the CPC opening as to why we would close it when we don't close any other ones. So I think that maybe everyone's treated the same, maybe we should have a close date on all of them.
Okay.
And partially because I think that if folks, I know myself included, if there's an open date, I'll say, yeah, I'll do it tomorrow, I'll do it tomorrow, I'll do it tomorrow, but if, you know, you know it's closed, then you say, all right, you know, I have one more day or I'm not getting in.
Well, the issue is if we don't fill the committee, right? So a close date makes sense if we have more people than we need.
Yeah, you just can reopen it.
But a lot of committees, I mean, the recruitment, we have open seats on committees now and we can't close it because we would keep open seats forever, right? So there's some measure of rolling on all the committees, so I guess that's my concern. If we close it and we have two people.
Yeah, I guess that's.
We're not at a committee. So I think it's open until we fill it, at least initially.
I think people are going to be passionate.
I hope so, Peter.
I think so.
But so if we don't close it and all of a sudden, you know, we have like 20 people, for how many people? You know, 20, and then when are we going to say, oh, we can't take anymore, and then someone comes in right after that?
The way I saw them do it in Hamilton was like they filled the seats as the applications came in to some degree, so it wasn't, it was like.
First come, first served?
Yeah.
That would be hard.
You could have, you could have like an initial cutoff, like to try to fill the initial seats, but not like a firm close, you can't get on it again.
No, I think that if we don't have a.
Just maybe if there's more people interested than there are seats, I feel like you got to give a deadline because then the board's going to have to either interview or make choices. So like then where do you draw the line as to who gets in? So if somebody, you know, one applies on Friday, one applies on Saturday, you know, if, at least if they know that the hard deadline was Friday, then you can cut them off at Saturday, but if it's not, then it's like a, you know, I don't foresee that there's going to be like thousands of people trying to.
I hope we have that problem.
Trying to claim, claimer to get in, but I do think that the probably, I, I, I do think it's a pretty popular topic. I wouldn't be surprised if we had more than five.
Yep.
So.
The more seats.
Kind of nice to have a.
So let's, let's put it out there with a close date of January 25th and see if it's working.
I mean, if we don't have enough people, you just, oh, extend it.
Extend it.
You ready?
I hope you guys are right, but that's booming.
That would be good, that would be good. Yeah, let's do a vote.
Okay, I move that we roll out the Clap Climate Action Committees starting January 1st and closing on 1/25.
No, starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow?
Start tomorrow. Yeah, just get it right. Uh, wait, wait, they have to put it on the website, so we can't really start tomorrow. Today is what day?
19th.
Today's Tuesday.
You could say as early as tomorrow and then.
Okay, as early as tomorrow.
As early as tomorrow and closing on 1/25, 2024. Second?
Wow, that seems so far away. Any more comments on that? Let's take a vote.
Ben, yes.
Peter, yes.
Diane, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
It's unanimous. Let's get this climate action.
Bob Moles, we love you.
Action Committee started.
Tell all your friends.
Tell all your friends. So that brings us to the end of business. I don't, oh no, it does not.
Minutes.
And I actually read the minutes.
You did?
And I have, I have phoned the pick.
So I think, Michelle, we got the corrections on the spelling Diane and, and the double, there was six words that were duplicated.
Yep.
Out of there. So.
This is on November 7th, 24th.
Yes, on the November 7th.
I'll go on, on page 2B, top. I'll go on, on, on page two B, top.
Mm-hmm, Peter Clay.
Peter Clay reported that he toured the Harbor Light Homes project at Maple Woods and noted that there will be immense landscaping installed, and that is tax-paying property. So extensive.
And we just need to throw an A in there.
Extensive, not immense.
Yeah.
And an A, it is a tax-paying property.
What the hell was I saying?
And I would also like to mention that there is no D. Someone put a D in, but it's all my report under C. So no D and corrections in B. And I think unless anybody else found anything else.
I, I didn't. I mean, I, I found like an extra S here and there, but you know what the heck.
Yeah. Not as important as my name being spelled right. Okay.
Immense.
Immense, immense, extensive.
You'd have a jungle across the street from you.
Let's take a motion, let's take a motion on, on this, these minutes.
I move to approve the select board minutes of eleven oh seven, twenty twenty-three.
As amended.
And.
As amended.
As amended.
Don't do the other ones yet, we didn't talk about them. Second?
Second.
Perfect. Any other comments on November seventh? Let's vote.
I have to abstain because I missed the first hour and a quarter of that meeting.
Ah, okay. One abstention.
Uh, yes.
Yes, Diane, you go, yes?
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Okay, four. Four.
Yes is one of them.
Four zero one.
Thank you. For those minutes, I, for the minutes of, uh, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, did anybody have any comments on that?
No, it was like the fastest meeting ever.
That was an amazing meeting.
Just one.
Oh, we found something.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, I'm not, I think it's not, it says not to adopt a small commercial exemption. I think it's just not to adopt a commercial exemption.
Small commercial.
Small commercial.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind then.
All right, I move to approve the select board minutes of twelve, twelve, twenty twenty-three. Second?
Second, let's vote.
Ben, yes.
Peter, yes.
Diane, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
It is again unanimous approval of those minutes. All, so, um, we have Christmas coming up and New Year's coming up, I wish everybody the best of holidays. I will not be here on January second, so, um, I will see you after that in twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any other comments before we adjourn?
Clock says six twenty-one.
Clock says six twenty-one.
I move that we adjourn the, uh, town Wyndham select board meeting of twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-three at six twenty-one PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Ben, yes.
Peter, yes.
Diane, yes?
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
So none opposed, it's unanimous, we're closed. Thank you very much.
So Deirdre, was that fast enough?